Yeah. And I'd like to call the village Board meeting of May 6, 2024 to order. And we will begin with roll call. Trustee Bulter?
Here.
Trustee Woods?
Here.
Trustee Owens?
Here.
Trustee Johnson?
Here.
Trustee Grease?
Here.
Trustee Passon?
Here.
And then my guy? Here. Um, we'd like to invite you to join us for a question.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our big evening for the town to meet her.
There is. First is Jim Farmer, 8041 North Steerberg Road.
Good evening. Uh, yes, Jim Farmer, 8041 North Steerberg Road. I just wanted to make a comment on the recent sort of ordinance that is being proposed. Uh, first of all, I want to pay that I'm in favor, except there are some concerns I have. One of them is that I've been likely to focus at the language of that ordinance really needs to be flexible enough to still cite a nuisance even if it's five months or fifteen or every three months time period hasn't been met. Um, because a property can have a consistent pattern just under, being just underneath those thresholds and still be a nuisance. Um, the other thing that I didn't know if the ordinance did is if it included buyer safety resource calls or if it was just police calls. Um, if the nuisance property knows that they are reaching the threshold, um, they may avoid public services to stay under that threshold. That's another thing I think you do, which is another reason why it needs to be more flexible. Um, I'm hoping, but I don't know, is code enforcement infractions part of the criteria that gets put into that? Um, if not, then I think it needs to be included or some sort of additional language um, regarding properties that have a consistent code violation problem. Um, and does any call to a property for policing by services become an incident towards the count, including such things as burger alarm errors? That's another one that I didn't know if that was included in there. Um, so I ask that you have an ordinance with enough flexibility to be effective and enforceable. Uh, because the public perceived nuisances damages the image of the village if the ordinance is too lenient. So therefore, I really hope that that when you evaluate this, you take that all consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Is coming up.
Uh, Deborah Woods, 3435 West Pelican Lane.
Good evening. Deborah Woods, 3435 West Pelican Lane. I just wanted to make a comment about you're going to review the chicken ordinance. It's going to be moved to the plan commission. I'm really against the chickens. I mean, we have enough trouble in our yard alone with priorities that I can't imagine them frowning around at night. You know, with the dog out there and I just feel like it could be a problem. So I'm a real chicken person.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John Buckley, 9454, oh, sorry.
Good evening. John Buckley, 9454. Well, couple of quick thanks. First, congratulations to the board members who will be receiving. Thank you for your service and thank everybody for your service and those. We appreciate what you do. Secondly, I'm going to echo a little bit what what Jim said about the about the nuisance for this. Um, I wish it needs to be flexible enough to cover code violations and I'm not a mathematician, but I think if you have fifteen in ninety days, you're going to have five in thirty days. Uh, I don't know whether that's true or not, so that could be a little bit redundant, but I want to speak about the number. Our neighbor to the south of Milwaukee has a similar ordinance. It's three violations in thirty days. So I first an advisement, the drug code or something's going on. Second is the one and third time the hammer drops. I think uh, the five is too many. We're just going to skip by and get to the thirty days and maybe have it done. So again, I again, flexibility is key, but I think more stringent time periods or violations uh, might be in order. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it?
Yep.
All right. Uh, the next item on our agenda is a special presentation swearing in the elected village trustees Renee Booker and Jeff Woods. Are you?
Do you understand?
You have to say?
Yeah.
Are you doing one at a time?
We can do both.
Okay.
All right. If you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. Austin. I state your name.
I am Renee Cooper Woods.
Haven't been elected or appointed to the office of trustee.
And have been elected or appointed to the office of the trust trustee.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But have not yet entered upon.
Swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and. That's all.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office to the best of my ability.
The duties of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Um, the next item on our agenda is our reports from elected official staff and those are in our packets. I love if anyone had any questions or comments about any of the reports. Uh, trustee Owens?
I'm just going to comment on these report. I thought it was very well known. It's very important.
Pleasure. Anyone else? Uh, Trustee Johnson?
I have a question related to the meeting. I just want to go more related to the sales tax. Is there a way to get this resolved or is still hanging out to grow out?
Yeah, we, when we met with her, we just notified of the problem, which we weren't the first. There were other municipalities who have witnessed the same um, issue. And we informed them that there's a way through some Congress legislation that could help address it. So that was something that they weren't aware of and they were going to, her office was going to research. So that's where we left it and they were going to notify municipalities that if they could um, you know, the right legislative um, um, action to help address it, they would let us know.
Thank you.
Anyone else? And I'd like to also echo um, the police department's report um, seen in the last few years, the diversity in terms of race, ethnicity, and women. Significant. So I appreciate that. I think it's a good reflection of the village. All right. Um, if there's no other questions or comments on the report, we will go to the consent agenda, which has um, consideration of amendments from our May 15 meeting. Uh, consider approval of volunteer board, uh, commission and committee appointments. Uh, proclamation to recognize national law enforcement memorial week of 2024. Consider proclamation to recognize public works week of 2024. Assigning a review of the chicken ordinance to the plan commission. And I would say to those that express concern, maybe keep an eye. So when it comes to a plan commission, you may want a ten if you can. Um, and then uh, consider appointment of a vice chair for the 2024, 25 village board meetings. Um, any questions related to any of those items?
Yeah, all right. Uh, either being. So I was just wondering, what was the process to determine who's going to be assigned to the committee?
Meaning who? Meaning of committee?
People moving around to different uh, committee assignments.
You mean?
The whole as well.
Yeah. What was the?
What was the process? Because uh, when, you know, when I came to board, uh, when I actually first came to the village, uh, I, I wanted to be a part of committees that I had a background in, a very expertise. And so things like beautification and um, arms, while they're valid, I had no real direct interest in them. I've been on the board for five years. I served on the numbers committee. I served on public work, actually, I shared that. So I was curious as to what was the process and then I see that you got some people have assigned to one committee, some assigned to three. I mean, I'm just kind of curious how you arrived at your position.
So the, the decision or the recommendation came from me. And uh, what I look at is we are all duly elected to serve on the board. And uh, there are various people that come with the same similar experience. But we want to give people an opportunity to serve on different committees. So you get the full spectrum of how the village operates. So um, if somebody's been on a committee for four years, I think it's for three years, good opportunity to maybe have them move to something else. If somebody else come to that committee. Because otherwise you get pretty focused on the one or two areas within it. And I think you may not know what you're able to offer another committee if you never served on. As it relates to one, two, or three appointments, I made one error. I had one person from three committees and realized that, and I made that adjustment today. So that was not intentional. Um, we have reduced the number of committees that we have for people to serve on. So I try to make it applicable, at least two across. Uh, and some committees don't meet. So if you're on tourism, maybe you would get another, a heavier committee that meets on a monthly basis. You have CDA that doesn't meet. Um, you have uh, maybe some others, but looking at trying to balance that out and give everybody an opportunity to serve on different, different committees. Um, board commit uh, committees change every year. So you could stay on it uh, that one again next year or you could change something?
I just concern that I have uh, was that could it be possible? I mean, if you do this every year. And so if this happens in May, February, or whatever, maybe a couple of months before, just let the board know that, okay, this is coming up. There are committees, uh, are there any committees that could be there for us to serve with? And let the board, uh, the individuals choose those committees. Then if there's a conflict between many people wanting to go to one community, you just say, well, okay. Uh, got too many on this one. How would you like to go to that committee? You know, because my concern is that also is that for the volunteers, uh, citizen volunteers, they can choose whatever thing they, they want they sign, you know? You review on it and then bring it to the board. But the board doesn't have that. It's like, we're just putting on a committee. And we didn't know about it until we saw the document come out first to the board. But we didn't have a chance to, like, one of the committees. Um, I have a conflict with because my church had, has a meeting at that time. So that's this, this way, if you want to put it out there and say, well, hey, this is what we're looking at. We can run through this. Are these some committees that you'd be interested in? That way, if, say, I've been on a committee for three or four years. Uh, and there is another committee I'd like to serve on, well, then I, I'll pick that committee. So you serve the same purpose, but you give us input into doing that versus you having to think about, okay, well, Amos has been on this committee. What committee can I put mine? We as individuals know these communities. That would take some of the weight off of you.
It's not a weight, but I will uh, take your suggestion under advisement. And keep in mind that every year uh, this board may change. And so you bring new people on. Uh, so I would love to be able to give everybody what they want. But that may not happen. And one person that doesn't get what they want, it's going to be unhappy. So as a board, I think we need to work together and be flexible on serving where we're asked to. If you have a direct conflict, let me know. Yeah. Because I don't, I mean, I don't know people's schedule. All I know is, and to be perfectly honest, I don't look at when the committee is meeting to say it meets on Tuesday at this time to say, okay, who do I slide in here? And I also don't do that for people that uh, can complete an application online and say, I want to serve on these three different committees. That would be a nightmare. Because you're never going to be able to accommodate everybody's schedule function. All right. Uh, uh, are there questions, comments?
Uh, this clarification for me, when it comes to some of the committees, I know that there's two trustees on some committees and that. Uh, I mean, if needed, I'm willing to serve on another committee.
Yeah, and as I stated earlier, some of these things have changed, but the, the committees, the number of people that are on is based on our ordinances, not the order. Yeah, ordinances. They say you need two people or three, so that's why you pick that to be one. And it also indicates when a trustee should chair a committee. So what I would suggest that all of us do, take an opportunity to look at all of these different committees and where there are two or three and who's going to be chairing, because you may be on the committee and it could be uh, community volunteer that chairs. So.
I mean, I'm sort of, I mean, you know, I'll go where I'm needed.
Yeah, okay. But you'll be my thing?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
When I first came on, I understood.
All right.
And so I went where I was needed because I had no problem. I don't have a problem.
Well, I think all of us are needed wherever.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, when I came on, my experience was not considered at all, not at all. And I was relegated to committees that didn't meet. So, but as I said, I'll take it under advisement. And anyone that wants to shout? Figure it out with this? I welcome it because I'm telling you, it ain't easy as caring.
Mm-mm.
Okay. Anybody that want to shout? Figure it out? Uh, we start using in, in uh, February, March, putting out. Um, it would be a good experience. All right. Um, the other thing uh, that we, I think, was it last year or two years ago that we looked at appointing a vice chair for the village board? This, this is the very beginning. Renee, I think you served once.
Oh, this is only one?
No, you served two years.
It was two.
Really?
Because we did that once I started.
Yeah.
So.
But it's fair for me.
Well, that's because I am, I'm in here. I take much. I'm going to take a few more vacations.
How's that going?
So, so we're going to transition. We're recommending that trustee Thompson uh, be the uh, vice chair for uh, the coming year. And again, uh, you know, we want to give you an opportunity to do that. So it's only four times. That's pretty good. Four years. I should get in a war. Uh, if there's nothing, if there, if there is nothing else, uh, can we entertain a motion to approve consent agenda?
I know that we approve of that consent agenda.
Is your second?
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Woods to approve consent agenda. Are those in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? I stand most curious. Thank you. Under new business, uh, we have consider approval of the fee adjustments for public pool license.
Great. Do you want to use the mic?
Yes, good evening. Good evening. Uh, my name is Brad Serenly. I'm the deputy health officer for the North Shore Health Department. And today we're bringing forward a proposal to adopt, not only adopt uh, what the state has already put in place for public pools. Let me back up. The North Shore Environmental Health Consortium is a program of the North Shore Health Department. Uh, and uh, we do inspections and licensing activities for uh, recreational uh, businesses. So that includes hotels, that includes food establishments, public pools. Uh, in this case right now, uh, the state has changed a statute. It's called ATCD 76 and they have adopted a new way to license public pools. Uh, so I'm looking to also adopt the new uh, their new way where they're putting each pool in a separate category uh, and then associating a fee with that category. That category is uh, designed in a way to figure out how complex a pool operation is. Uh, and, and then a fee is associated with that. So the proposal today is to adopt the uh, DACAP pool schedule or the pool fees. And then in addition, uh, add 12% to each of those fees. Uh, because we have to, as an agent for the Department of Agriculture, uh, annually, we have to reimburse 12% of their fee. So if we adopt their fee and add 12% on top of that, then it, it breaks even. So that's the proposal for adopting that.
So we haven't had one this before?
This is new.
That's correct.
So you're talking about the DAP in this, the boundary?
Uh, so the top one, the NS, ES tool, that is what we're going to leave for the proposal. I put the bottom uh, and there at bottom table to kind of show what the state.
Okay. And is this, when you say uh, public pool, is this just like a pond or is it somebody that's got a tiny backyard?
No, no, nothing residential. So it's maybe like a hotel with a pool and then a pregnant top class with a pool.
Okay, so that's. Do we know how many we have in the village?
Yes. Uh, we have 24 pools in Village Brown here.
So this would be a new revenue for the health.
Uh, uh, not a lot really, um, because uh, we've already had this program in place the entire time. It's just a, a fee adjustment.
Okay.
Uh, so yeah, not, there's not a lot of that, sure. We have a total of 73 pools as part of the consortium. That program itself brings in $23,000 uh, and, or with the change, it'll bring in $23,000. Currently, we only take in $20,000. So it's a $3,000 change.
Questions?
So if I'm getting it correctly, the current 24 pool operators are already aware of this fee. The only thing would be the additional 12%.
Uh, the current pool operators are already aware of the license that they need to obtain.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, their current license fee is $274. What is changing is they will be put into a different category. Uh, where, for example, in Village Brown here, we have 18 pools that fall into the simple category. We have one pool that falls under the moderate with the features category and five pools that are just modern. So then they will be notified. I'm looking for this to go into effect on September 1st of this year. Uh, it'll have no effect on their license this year. Uh, so it would go into effect for the licensing of next year. So and that license cycle is uh, by June 30th of next year. So we would have plenty of time to know about.
Uh, trustee Owens?
I was just trying to understand your graph here as far as, you know, the cost and like, for example, the NSC HC pool type, you've got, let's say, we'll take the simple and you've got the annual fee, then you've got a pre-inspection, a re-inspection, a plan review, and so. So are you adding all of those together or how, how does that work? I'm just trying to understand how you're pricing.
Right. Uh, all of those fees already exist in the current fee schedule. It's just an adjustment. The annual fee that you see on the part left there, this is what is charged to each pool operator annually. The pre-inspection is for some, if there was a brand new pool coming to the village, we would go out there and do a special inspection to issue a license for that. Uh, the re-inspection is if we're having uh, difficulties with the pool, we have to go back and check for advice. Uh, plan review is something that we do when there is a new pool that's going to be put in for a, for a new public pool uh, that we want to check for certain health-related code items to make sure that those are in place. Consulates, I've been there 13 years. I haven't had to do that, but it's just a fee that stays there and a late fee.
Not paying their annual fee by January 30th. Annual, but if they need, say, a re-inspection on a pool order, they pay the 274 plus the 137.
When, when their annual inspection comes and there's issue where we have to go back, they would be charged $137 uh, for the second inspection when we come back. And that would just go into their account where they could be charged that for the next renewable period.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Uh, trustee Johnson?
Yeah, let me get this. I'm trying to get some clarification. So for Brown here, who has pools still or pond, if 50 is category, they would have to pay a certain fee also?
No, we do not license the pond because they do not have a circulation system. So this is specific to public pools where they recirculate the water, they treat it, they send it back out. Uh, the water is treated, but it is not circulated. So it doesn't fall under a category that requires license.
But their inspections are done based on the pond.
Uh, we do not inspect the pond because they're, they're exempt from license.
Other questions? And now we need a motion to approve the fee adjustment.
I mean, that we approve the fee adjustment for uh, the fee adjustments for public pool licenses.
Is your second?
My second.
It's been moved by trustee Woods, seconded by trustee Booker to approve the fee adjustment for public pool licensing. Although in favor, uh, any opposed? I stand. Thank you. And I will thank you for the next one too. All right. Amendment to, uh, I want this to amend food establishment licensing rules and regulations.
Yes, so uh, in November of 2023, the North Shore Environmental Health had a program evaluation. There are some things that had come up in that evaluation to amend our ordinance to reflect what is uh, already uh, actually law uh, through the Department of Agriculture. And this is, this is a reflection of what they asked us to change. Uh, attorney uh, Byer had looked through it already, um, and created this amendment on its own.
All right. If you look in your packet, we have the memo, but then there's a a graph or chart that has the old ordinance and then the new with the uh, change in red. Who, who's recommended the changes? Who you got?
Uh, this came through a program evaluation from the Department of Agriculture. We are agents uh, for the Department of Agriculture to conduct inspections for the area.
Is this state or federal?
Uh, this would be state.
Okay. And if anyone has questions, as Brad said, uh, attorney Byer has reviewed this.
Do you know how many food establishments you have?
Sorry.
Do you know how many food establishments that you have?
Uh, total, we have about 163 food establishments.
In the North Shore?
In the North Shore.
And I would assume that you've taken this before each board?
This is the first one, but it will go there actually for each board.
Other questions? If not, we do need a motion to move this amendment to ordinance twenty-four.
Move approval of ordinance twenty-four dash oh four, ordinance to amend food establishment licensing rules and regulations.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Wood and second by trustee Reed to amend ordinance twenty-four oh four, move like food establishment licensing rules and regulations. Although in favor, any opposed? I stand, most curious, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is to approve, consider approval of a reserve Class B liquor and Class B fermented malt that which licenses application for Brown Deer Kitchen and Cocktail at ninety-eighty North Green Bay Road. Who's speaking today?
Karen.
So Tasha Alifield, I believe you say, applied for the Class B liquor application, looking to open June first for the old crap to your building at ninety-eighty North Green Bay. And it is a reserved license, so there is a one-time fee of ten thousand dollars.
And I know that the police department usually does background checks for duty.
Yes, yes.
And any concerns?
I've told a lot of them, but I don't think there was, right?
No, to be considered.
Questions?
Well, I thought this conversation at this, it wasn't gonna open right, why? Do we have a discussion?
I don't, no, I don't see any issue why they can't.
Many got to go through any inspection?
Yeah.
Yeah. Trustee Jackson?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I know this individual might not have staff. I'm just looking forward to seeing them here tonight, ask any questions. Do you have any reason why they weren't able to make it tonight?
She didn't tell me why, she just said she couldn't make it.
Is something we can do? Able? Or? You feel comfortable in the report without actually having to work?
Yeah, I mean, if you would like my response to that, I mean, typically when you're giving, you know, a liquor license of this magnitude, a municipality wants to, you know, have confidence that it will be executed based on your expectations and. So if you want to defer saying we're not going to approve unless you're in attendance, be able to answer your questions, I I think that would be appropriate if you so choose.
Do you still choose? Go move, make that motion?
Move the table, this license, if we have option, we need to make a little bit of individual.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
It's been moved by trustee Jackson and second by trustee Carter to defer consideration of this reserve license into the applicant, you know, attendant board being. Although in favor, any opposed? I stand, most curious, thank you. So staff will let her know in the next meeting.
Yep, will do.
Alright. The next item is consider ordinance twenty-four hyphen oh five, ordinance to create inspection twenty-nine hyphen twelve of Village Brown Deer Municipal Pool and Establishing Special Charge Again, Trying to Use the Properties. We have heard a couple of our residents that spoke to their concerns or perhaps will defer to you.
Yeah, I'll just tee it up. We have a few properties that we've had some issues with and just with the amount of staff time involved. Whether that's police, fire, health, et cetera, building inspection even. This is an area that we want to be able to start, you know, recouping some costs and have the flexibility of making that determination just another tool in our toolbox. Because, you know, if I'm a taxpayer in Village Brown Deer and someone is utilizing a lot of the resources, you know, that's kind of that equity piece. So this was something that we got from South Milwaukee. Talking with South Milwaukee, South Milwaukee will identify the special charge when needed. But they try to make every effort working with the property owner, you know, before executing. So once again, it's just a tool in their toolbox and if it really becomes problematic, that they can execute. I might let attorney Bear just go through some of those inquiries and maybe Nathan, you and I can kind of pig team this, but I'm going to give you the first shot because I want to make sure with some of Mr. Farmer's comments that these, a lot of these questions are really great questions. There's stuff that we've talked about internally and I think it would be good for us to be able to relay those comments to the board for reassurance of how this would be executed. So Nathan, do you mind just?
Absolutely, so thank you, thank you. There's a number of questions and thank you for typing these out, that's extremely helpful. The first comment or question says, need language to be flexible enough to still cite a nuisance even if the five per month or fifteen, three months hasn't been met. A property can have consistent pattern just under these numbers and be a nuisance. That is a hundred percent correct statement. You know, we could have an issue with the property. But, but as Tyler has said, this is really just another tool in our toolbox. If there is a code violation, you know, it doesn't not, it's not exclusive, it doesn't prevent us from citing a code violation or working with the property owner. What this really does is when we hit that certain threshold, we say, okay, you know, in the course of normal providing, normally providing services to residents and businesses and community, hey, you know, things happen, we have to respond with police or fire or rescue or whatever it is and that's fine. But if we see a consistent pattern where, you know, we hit these thresholds and it's specifically responding to, you know, it lists here such things as disorderly conduct, unlawful uses of different telephones or computers, harassment, physical abuse, possession of controlled substance. We're continually going to a property with these types of calls. It's like, well, you got to clean up your act or rather than placing that burden on all of the taxpayers collectively, we're going to start specially assessing you and charging you for those responses. So it's just, it's another tool that it gives us and we give, we give plenty of notice to property owners, they're getting close to the limit. The next question was, will the language include fire safety resource calls? There is a specific reference in sub C one that references the fire chief, including the chief of police, health department administrator, village engineer, whoever it might be to report when they have calls related to the quote-unquote nuisance activities that are defined therein. So I think that leads into the.
And Nathan, if we just pause real quick, I want the board to know that this drafted ordinance had been sent to all those departments and like the fire chief, the health officer, all of them have a copy of this ordinance as well. And I've answered some of their questions as well. So all of them have been informed that this would be a pending ordinance adopted tonight.
Alright, thank you for that clarification, that's a great point. And I think that ties in with question number five where it says, does any call to a property for police or fire services become an incident? Or it's the count included, that's a great question. No, it has to relate to a nuisance activity. And then there's those Wisconsin statutes listed on page two of the ordinance. So, you know, hey, somebody has, Uncle Bob is there for the Fourth of July weekend and, you know, he has a heart issue and they need to call the EMT to be safe. That's, you know, that's, that's not going to count against your, you know, your, against you for the numbers. You know, you have just a, you know, some kind of a routine issue that pops up and you need to call police service, you call that there's a suspicious person maybe lurking around or whatever and, you know, it turns out that it was a lost Uber drive. Well, you know, we're not going to count that, count that against you. So, you know, so it has to relate to these Wisconsin statutes that are listed generally and it has to be a nuisance activity. So there's, there's some, there's also been built into this some discretion where, you know, we can say, hey, we're, we're close to that threshold, then we work with the property owners to hopefully we never hit that threshold. But it does, it does build in some discretion. The next one is, oh, if the nuisance property knows they're reaching the threshold, they may avoid calling for police services. I, well, I think, but there's only one person that this is going to count against, it's the owner of the property. And my, my experience and I, perhaps Chief Nimmer could, could talk to this, but I imagine that the calls that we're receiving are from other residents who are not involved in the nuisance activity that would like to see that nuisance activity occur.
Right, so it could, it could be apartment complex where a renter or tenant continues to call and have different, you know, incidences or it could be a retailer where we're getting multiple calls even per day. I mean, for those audiences, you know, that, that fee, I mean, they're not, they're not the ones that are paying yet. So, but as we talked with other entities who, you know, have such an ordinance, that's something that, you know, we, we want to be mindful of still and certainly we don't want to do anything that would discourage people from calling in emergencies. So that's something that we have talked internally in making sure that, you know, this is something that, you know, we're having some, you know, egregious and continue incidences that are well-worned in.
Great point. And then the last question is, is our code enforcement infraction is part of the criteria? I think the answer to that is it depends on what part of the code you're talking about. Again, if, what it does is the ordinance defines nuisance activities. Not just, you know, Uncle, Uncle Bob had a, had a heart issue and so we sent the EMTs over. It has to be nuisance activities related to, you know, these Wisconsin statutes like disorderly conduct, retail, you know, criminal trespass, dwelling endangering safety weapons. So there's, there's a bunch of things that are listed. So if it relates to those generally and if it's just regular code violations, you know, they're not maintaining the exterior of the property, they're not maintaining the yard, you know, that kind of thing. We can, we can write violations for the building code, we can write, write violations for other things separately from this, it doesn't work that way. It would still all roll into an assessment by staff, hey, you know, are we to the point where we need to assess? So there's a lot of flexibility built into the, built into the criteria.
Our trustee Wood, who keeps the database?
So that'd be something that the police department would have the call for service. So, you know, if, if we feel that egregious and continuous occurrences are happening in a property, they would pull up the, the call volume and identify the time for each officer or same thing if we're having multiple health violations, the health department would keep a track of those. So I would work with those departments to come up with your, our staff calls for service that would count and here's the time that it would take and the dollars to compensate for that time to come up with that total fee.
Well, I mean, I was wondering because the police are going out there separately from the health department, separately from the fire department. All together could be evident of calls, right?
Right.
But if they don't know each one of us going out.
That would be something as the manager, I would work with each of those departments to get that information, so.
And I think, I think as a practical matter, how it would work is, we all know, you know, anecdotally, okay, well, we've had a bunch of calls here, a bunch of calls there. So there would probably be maybe an email or a staff meeting or something to say, hey, you know, we, we've noticed in the past month, there's been a number of responses to this particular property. We know we've had some little complaints and calls to the village hall. Let's send out a, you know, let's send out an email and let's, let's start tracking. You know, please let us know if you have a call related to this property over the next, you know, starting June first, you know, we're, we're going to track it through the next ninety days or whatever it is. And, and so I think there's, you can do coordination because for the most part, I would say we know where it's probably.
Quarterly review, like for, I think we kind of set up similar, but more on a quarterly basis that we would review back. And if it quantifies for any of those amounts, that's where we would sit down and talk as staff. But I would be the one to coordinate that.
Trustee. Trustee Jackson?
Yeah, looking at this, since we're moving on this. Are we hearing this towards more rental properties, larger number of units where we have multiple tenants inside that building and maybe do some to the other tenants? Or is this focusing on the whole village more so?
I would say it's a focus on a property owner or a property that is, you know, just hampering our resources. You know, what are the properties where we are constantly there weekly for, you know, nuisance-related calls? And so whether it's a commercial business or, you know, a large apartment complex, you know, yeah, I would say, you know, there's few, but I, we have a good handle of which, which ones those are. And we can utilize this to curb some, you know, some behavior to address those common nuisance calls that we're getting.
Can we use an example with the marketplace? So if we have a tenant in the marketplace and they continue to allow students, this, but of their environment over there, that will go to the property owner, not the tenant?
It'll go to the property owner for the special charge. That's up to that property owner as far as how they, you know, maybe they might ask the tenant to pay for it. That's, that's up to them to figure out. Yeah.
And I can vote in chief, I think you were here. We had a residential treatment program for teens. And within forty-five months, I think the number of police calls that were made got to be exactly about anywhere on the, around five. We didn't have this policy in place and attorney Fuchs had to actually, you know, document all of that. And we did, we did go to court to identify this as a nuisance bribe. The person ended up closing, but the amount of resources, I don't, I don't remember.
I wasn't. Oh, yeah, I, I've been told about it.
Okay, well, I know I got plenty of calls. So, but we didn't have anything like this in place that we could even say anything, we had to build a case.
Yep.
Yeah. Other questions?
I guess I have a comment related to the five fifteen. Is that too much latitude? Do you want to look at maybe increase that network down to maybe three and maybe ten? As a way to kind of look at this to, how to deal with the issue right away, whether then, then it may or it can impact the community more?
I think you can set whatever you would like. For the ones that we reviewed, this is a little bit more. I think my mental thought was, start a little bit on the higher end, just with it being new. And then we could always modify the ordinance to get it lower after a year or two with the implementation of the program. But we still have the flexibility. So if you pick the lower number, you know, that still gives us the flexibility of working with the property owner that if they, you know, get to that three number, okay, like moving forward, how are we going to work with them? So if you want to lower that number, I, I mean, I would be supportive for sure. So if you want to do three and nine, I, that's fine.
How would we notify people in the village that this is coming?
Well, yeah, we're going to put it out to all of our communications. I mean, we have a pretty good handle of which properties though are going to be the ones that we will be talking to more of. Well, yeah, we're going to put it out to all of our communications. I mean, we have a pretty good handle of which properties though are going to be the ones that we will be talking to more of. This is why I really want to use it. This is a great thing that we can reference and I can send an email as kind of a way like, okay, like, this is now, you know, this, yeah, this is, this is another thing that could be placed onto you that would financially impact you. So um, but you know, some of those more problematic properties, I think, you know, we'll send a direct communication to them to let them know that this is now in effect.
Other questions? Trustee Woods?
Well, I was looking at the numbers too. I think we should leave the five there. But I think instead of fifteen, it should be ten. Because that way, even if they're trying to stay under it, it's obvious by the time they hit that third month. I'll hit the numbers. And since it's not set in stone that you have to do something, it gives you the chance to get to them a little sooner if you have to.
That's fine.
Because if they're going to start playing games, we want to be able to hammer stats as we can.
Yep.
So we have five and ten, we have three and a half.
Whoever makes the motion, you know, you feel free to use the recommended language. And afterwards, you can just say with the amendment of, and then change the days however you would like.
Is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion then. A pool that holds for instance, seven twenty-nine twelve, where the ditch goes to Brown Deer Municipal Code, establishing a special charge against chronic use of property and changing the number from five to three within the first thirty days into nine within the first ninety days.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
It's been moved by trustee Johnson effect about trustee Thompson to approve an ordinance for each section forty-nine hyphen twelve um, with the amended numbers for complaints. All those in favor? Uh, any opposed? Motion carries. Alright. The next item on our agenda is consider a pool goal to modify fee schedule.
So I'll take this one. So this will include the new fee for chronic nuisance. Um, but it'll also for the community services department include a fee anytime we have new construction or redevelopment. Um, and there's a specialized inspection needed for like erosion control measures or utility extensions, connections um, in order to compensate for that time to do those inspections that fee is also in. And I did confirm with Nate, he checked on a few examples to make sure that that fee is is comparable with other fees that are being done at other municipalities.
So those changes and then the ones for the water and soup?
Yep. So if you look through the fee scheduled or hi- the ones that are new are highlighted. So you get sense.
Any questions?
Yep, that's in there. Find it.
If there are no questions, then we entertain motion.
I'm in motion. I know we approved the modified fee schedule was presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
The move by trustee Woods and second by trustee Booker to approve the modified fee schedule for twenty-twenty-four. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say have it. Motion carries. Thank you.
The pleasure.
The next item on our agenda is to recess into cold session pursuant to Mr. Thompson's stats nineteen point eighty-five. One, E and G for the following reasons. E, deliberating or negotiating and purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Kid five development and possible creation of kids six. G, to confer with legal counsel or the governmental body who was renewing or or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Five updating might be reflected in municipal property insurer on coverage and availability code. Is there a second?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Uh, motion carries. We will go into closed session at six fifty. We are returning into open session and it is seven thirty-four PM and there is no further action. So I move adjournment at seven thirty-four PM.